Buenos, buenos días a todos. Gracias por estar aquí en el edificio del Congreso de Guam. Hoy estamos aquí para la nombración de Linda OmPinko D'Norsie como directora del Departamento de Salud y Servicios Sociales del Departamento de Salud y Servicios Sociales de Guam. Así que el Comité de Salud, Turismo, Preservación Histórica, Tierra y Justicia se ha llamado a orden. Hoy es miércoles 18 de febrero, el tiempo es las 8:31 de la mañana. Los avisos para este escenario de confirmación fueron distribuidos por correo electrónico a todos los senadores y a los principales medios de transmisión en febrero 11 y nuevamente en febrero 14 de 2019. El aviso también fue publicado en el periódico Daily Post en febrero 11, 12 y 15. Me gustaría agradecer a mis colegas por asistir a este escenario de ayer. Tenemos al vicepresidente Sabina Pérez, tenemos al senador Telotaita Gui, al senador Luis Borhamunia, tenemos al senador James Moylan, al senador Joseph Augustine y al senador Amanda Hay varias personas que se han firmado para testificar, pero me gustaría preguntar, a la solicitud de la nominación, si esos médicos pueden venir primero para que puedan volver a trabajar primero. Y sé que aquí tenemos a los jefes y me gustaría pedirle a los jefes que vengan tan pronto como sea posible después de eso. Si hay algún médico que quisiera venir primero, por favor proceda. Y si no, llamaré al jefe... Oh, por favor... Antes de escuchar lo que dice el panel, me gustaría resumir rápidamente. La directora del Departamento de Salud pública tiene las cualificaciones mínimas que tienen que cumplir según nuestro estatuto. Tendrán que haber graduado de una universidad o colegio reconocido con un título de máster en administración de salud, gestión de servicios de salud, servicio de salud humana o un campo relacionado con la salud. Y cinco años de experiencia en la administración y gestión de servicios de salud, servicio social o organización de servicios de salud, de los cuales tres años tendrán que haber experimentado como administradora o directora en un organismo de servicio social o de servicio de salud. O tendrán que haber graduado de una universidad o colegio reconocido con un título de máster en administración de negocios o administración pública y cinco años de experiencia, de los cuales tres años deben haber sido como administradora o directora en un entorno de salud pública, servicio social o organización de servicios de salud. O tendrán que haber graduado de una universidad o colegio reconocido con un título de máster en administración de negocios, administración pública, administración de salud, gestión de servicios humanos, servicio de salud o campo relacionado con la salud y ocho años de experiencia, de los cuales cinco años estarían en esas áreas particulares que mencionamos anteriormente. El oficio de la directora es parte de la División de Administración General del Departamento de Salud y Servicios Sociales de Guam. Son las directoras responsables de mantener el oficio central y los dos centros de salud principales a través de adquisición, emisión, almacenamiento, inventario y mantenimiento de todas las suministros y equipos, así como preparación de presupuestos, revisión y La directora proporciona funciones de apoyo administrativo departamental a las divisiones del departamento, la División de Salud pública, la División de Bienestar público, la División de Salud Ambiental y la División de Ciudadanos Senior. Colegues, el paquete de confirmación de la señora D'Norsie está incluido en sus carpetas informativas para su referencia, junto con una copia del estatuto de permiso para el Departamento de Salud Pública. El testimonio que se había presentado en advance por la señora D'Norsie, un testimonio escrito que se había presentado en advance. Quiero decirles que recibimos un testimonio de el señor Ben Menel el día en que se nombró, que fue hace semanas. Y así también hay testimonio del doctor Robert Leon Guerrero, pediatra FHP, Evelyn T. Armia, División de Contas de la DOA, supervisor general de contas. Doctor Anna Cooty Matthew, antigua directora de medicina activa de DPHSS, región sur. Mary Ann Dizon, directora ejecutiva ejecutiva de GCHC de Salud pública. Christina Higa, directora asociada de la Universidad de Hawaii Manoa, Programa de Investigación de Social Informática de Telecomunicaciones. Maureen Tang, RNBSN, también en salud pública, enfermera. El jefe honrado, Alan, también está aquí esta mañana, Alan Ngauta. Dr. Margaret Hattori Uchima, RNUOG, ella es la señora de la Escuela de Nuestra Salud y Ciencias de Salud. Y Cynthia Cabot, directora ejecutiva de la Coalición de Guam contra el Asalto Sexual y violencia familiar. Vamos a proceder con el testimonio del panel. Si pudieran, por favor, señalen su nombre para nuestros registros y luego procedan. Dr. ... proceden.
Soy el Dr. William W. Weir. Trabajo en el Centro de Salud y Servicios Sociales de Región Sur. Hace casi 20 años que comencé a trabajar en el Centro de Salud y Servicios Sociales de Región Sur con el entonces nuevo director administrador de cuidados primarios. A lo largo de los años, he conocido a Linda OmPinko D'Norsie en muchos facetas diferentes y a través de muchos pasos de logro. Lo primero fue literalmente sacar los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad a la modernidad cambiando un bureau de lápiz y papel en un sistema computado. Esto se hizo con empleados que en muchos casos ni siquiera sabían cómo escribir y usar una tecla. Esto ha permitido que los CHCs hagan gastos y datos abstractos, lo cual era crucial para obtener fondos para expandir y continuar sus operaciones. Ahora tenemos una nueva clínica en el Centro de Salud y Servicios de Región Sur y una clínica remodelada y ampliada en los Centros de Salud y Servicios de Región Norte como Linda es producto de una vieja familia chamorral que instó en ella una profunda ética de trabajo, respeto por la ley, la flexibilidad de encontrar soluciones alternativas a problemas difíciles y una sensación de responsabilidad basada en la fe de apoyar a su familia y a la familia mayor del pueblo de Guam a lo mejor de sus capacidades. Ha vivido más que esto. Linda OmPinko D'Norsie trabaja duro. Ha estado en la cima de una gran operación y es capaz de dar ustedes estadísticas y información financiera de manera casi instantánea. Creo que tomará a dos individuos para reemplazarla en sus roles en el Bureau de Cuidados Primarios y estoy feliz de que esta nombración significa que es fácilmente disponible para la consulta para aquellos que intentan reemplazarla, ya que se anunciaba que retiraría antes de aceptar el desafío de director de salud pública. Linda OmPinko D'Norsie es acuñadamente consciente de sus responsabilidades bajo las leyes de Guam y el gobierno de Estados Unidos y trabaja diligentemente para adherirse a esas leyes y directivas. En más de una ocasión, ha sido forzada a levantarse ante otros que extenderían estas leyes en nombre de expediencia o para avanzar sus propias agendas. Esta es una cualidad muy importante para un director que depende de dólares federales para una gran parte de su presupuesto, así como para un director que es llamado a explicar a la legislatura cómo su dinero ha sido gastado y será gastado en el futuro cuando esté a la hora de considerar el presupuesto. A lo largo de los años, como administradora del Bureau de Cuidados Primarios, ha buscado soluciones innovadoras para muchos de los problemas que impiden las operaciones de los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad. Al principio, había problemas con suministros básicos debido a adquisición y problemas de transporte. Esto se solució garantizando que un inventario adecuado de suministros críticos se mantuvo en mano para resistir un fallazo en financiamiento o en la entrega, lo que permitió que las clínicas operaran a plena eficiencia. Las medicinas adecuadas para nuestro cliente era otro problema agresivo. Desafortunadamente, el gobierno de Guam a lo largo de los años no ha tenido un historial estelar para el pago de servicio y suministros de prestación. Fue capaz de sumergirse en los programas federales de medicinas y suministros médicos que solucionaron este problema para los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad. Este programa se gestiona por el personal de farmacia del Centro de Salud y Servicios de la Comunidad, que contrató y ha apoyado a lo largo de los años. También ha logrado conseguir que la legislación se aprobara que garantice que el ingreso generado por los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad permanezca en el programa para seguir y mantener su misión de entregar el servicio de salud a los menos servidos de Guam. Aunque no siempre ha sido exitosa en todo lo que ha intentado, tiene un conocimiento profundo y comprensivo de cómo funciona el gobierno de Guam y no funciona, y ha trabajado continuamente dentro del sistema para asegurar que los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad continúan existiendo y funcionando en el nivel más óptimo que pueden, dada las limitaciones del sistema. Creo que este tipo de conocimiento es crucial para un director de salud pública efectivo. Finalmente, no puedo enfatizar demasiado la compromiso de Linda OmPinko D'Norsie en hacer lo correcto para el pueblo de Guam. Los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad no son solo un conjunto de edificios, sino también tienen programas que extienden a los pueblos y programas que funcionan en tandem con muchas otras entidades gubernamentales y privadas en Guam para garantizar que los servicios alcanzan a aquellos que están en la necesidad más alta. Anticiparía que bajo su liderazgo como directora de salud pública, veremos una expansión similar de servicios y programas de los que actualmente están disponibles. Sería feliz de responder cualquier pregunta que puedan tener sobre la fitness de Linda OmPinko D'Norsie para el trabajo como directora de salud pública. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Dr. Weir. ¿Hay preguntas para mis colegas de Dr. Weir? Si no, muchas gracias, Dr. Weir. Doctor, por favor, proceda.
Soy Lee Meadows, un médico familiar en el Bureau de Cuidados Primarios de la Comunidad de Salud en el Centro de Salud Pública del Norte. Gracias por la oportunidad de presentar las razones por las que creo que la señora D'Norsie es la mejor persona en Guam para ser directora de salud pública. Muchos, si no la mayoría, de nuestros programas de salud pública son financiados a través de dólares federales, ya sea por dones o programas especializados como el programa de tratamiento de la tuberculosis. Demonstrar un problema de salud pública que necesita abordar, desarrollar una propuesta, diseñar e implementar un programa sostenible que produce el mayor impacto para el dólar requiere de entrenamiento especializado. Involucra mucho más que solo escribir dones. De mi conocimiento, en la historia reciente, las únicas dos personas en el Departamento de Salud pública eran los másters de salud pública, o James Gillen y la señora D'Norsie. Y James, por supuesto, retirado. Linda ha sido directora del Bureau durante muchos años y la principal fuente de nuestro financiamiento proviene de ser un centro de salud federalmente calificado. El financiamiento adicional ha venido a través de dones, equipamiento, horas prolongadas, preparación de desastres, entre otros. La joya de la liderazgo que ha trabajado durante los últimos dos años, antes de que fuera programada para retirarse, fue conseguir que los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad estén certificados en el nivel más alto posible de un centro de hospitales médicos, único centro de hospitales médicos disponible en Guam. Este es el único centro tal y es el resultado de un montón de planeamiento. De todos los programas dirigidos a dones en la División de Salud pública, los centros de salud claramente proporcionan el cuidado más efectivo de cualquier programa, son altamente sostenibles y como anuncio se mencionó, en realidad son bastante lucrativos también. Strongly believe that Mrs. D'Norsie with her leadership can bring the same success to many of the other programs in public health. Además de sus habilidades en la gestión, Linda es también habilida en tener el ambiente político que viene con ser un director políticamente nombrado en Guam. Ha sido acogida por los gobernadores de ambos partidos para mantener esta posición, tanto ahora como en el pasado. Ha demostrado la capacidad de lograr los objetivos del gobernador sin perder el lado principal de las responsabilidades del Departamento de Salud Pública. Desde el cambio del sector privado a convertirse en empleado de Guam hace cinco años, he aprendido acuñadamente cuán crítico es este talento y estoy consciente de que no lo Hablando con mis compañeros de trabajo, encuentro que Linda tomó la dirección de directorship de los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad. Estaba en un estado bastante desorden, como el Dr. Weir mencionó. Se arregló eso. Estoy seguro de que el Departamento de Salud Pública alcanzará un estándar superior de excelencia bajo su liderazgo.
Muchas gracias, Dr. Meadows. ¿Hay alguna pregunta para el Dr. Meadows de mis colegas? Si no, entonces muchas gracias. ¿Dr. Kanishiro?
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Dr. Suzanne Kanishiro y soy la directora ejecutiva de salud pública en el Departamento de Salud y Servicios Sociales de Guam. Estoy aquí hoy en apoyo a la señora Linda OmPinko D'Norsie como directora de DPHSS. He estado con el departamento desde 1992 y he sido CPHO durante los últimos ocho años. Como CPHO, superviso la División de Salud pública bajo la cual el Bureau de Servicios de Cuidados Primarios, donde Linda era la directora ejecutiva, estaba ubicada. Fui la supervisora de Linda. Linda hizo mi trabajo fácil. Realmente no tenía que ser supervisada porque hizo su trabajo muy bien. Si algo tenía que hacer, lo hizo sin ser dicho para hacerlo. Cuando se enfrentaba a un problema, encontró soluciones para remediarlo. Ella es trabajadora duro y comprometida con hacer un buen trabajo. Es inteligente. Es un excelente escritor de dones. Es muy buena en la gestión de finanzas. Siempre le dije que cuando retirara, tendría que contratar al menos tres personas, en lugar de dos, dijo el Dr. Weir, para reemplazarla para hacer el trabajo que hizo ella. Sus reportes de solicitud de dones siempre se presentaban un mes antes de la fecha de submission. Sus reportes de solicitud de dones siempre se presentaban... Todos sus reportes eran muy detallados y completos. Nunca tuvieron preguntas después de leerlos porque respondieron en su reporte. Para decirles la verdad, cuando escribía este testimonio, volví a nuestros antiguos reportes para obtener algunos de los hechos a presentar. Siempre estaba muy orgullosa del hecho de que nunca daba al gobierno federal ningún dinero de regreso. Gaste cada centavo que recibió. Cuando la preguntaba por finanzas, ella podía decirte la cifra exacta hasta la última centavura. Todavía no se puede recordar todos esos números. Para relateros de cuán buena era en dirigir los centros de salud y servicios de la comunidad en julio de 2014, cuando consultores del Departamento de Recursos y Servicios de la Salud (HERSA) vinieron para visitar el sitio de visita requerido, los CHCs no cumplieron cinco de los 19 requisitos de los programas federales de centros de salud clave. Estaban cobrando y recolectando, poniendo en marcha la política de tarifas de descuento, cobertura de horas, autoridad de la junta y personal de gestión clave. Los CHCs tenían un año para traer a los CHCs en conformidad, o si no, afectaría 5.9 millones de fondos. Este financiamiento pagó por los salarios de 22 personal de CHC, incluidos médicos, enfermeras y personal de apoyo. Linda inmediatamente entró en acción para abordar las deficiencias. Cuatro de ellas eran relativamente fáciles de abordar, pero la que implicaba contratar personal de gestión clave fue el desafío. Los CHCs tenían que establecer la directora ejecutiva, el oficial financiero principal y las posiciones de la directora médica dentro del gobierno de Guam. La Junta de Comisiones de la Junta de Comisiones de la Junta de Comisiones de la Junta de la Junta de Comisiones de la Junta 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 de la She took it upon herself to look for grants to pay for the construction costs. She successfully applied for four million dollars' worth of grants for the Northern Region Community Health Center and about eight million for the Southern Region Community Center. If you asked her right now, she can give you the exact figures. The renovation of the Northern Clinic was completed in June two thousand and seven, and the renovation expansion of the Southern Clinic were completed in two thousand and ten. The renovation of the Northern Region Community Health Center involved the addition of seven thousand square feet to the existing facility, which included eight examination rooms, a triage room, an audiological testing room, an isolation room, provider offices, a social services office, and a waiting room. The facility is now needing to be expanded again. The expansion of Southern Region Community Health Center involved the addition of eight thousand six hundred seventy-four square feet on the first floor, which included six exam rooms, three isolation rooms, an oxygen room, a treatment room, a waiting room, a medical records filing room, a medical records area, and a decontamination room. The addition of ten thousand square feet for a second floor to house administrative offices, two conference rooms, and a telemedicine room, food stamps and WIC offices, and a housing for a six hundred kilowatt generator. The CHCs went from fifteen thousand square feet to almost thirty-five thousand square feet. The people of Guam should be very proud of to have such a modern clinic in the South. Linda has always put the welfare of the patients first. She is committed to helping those who need it the most, the uninsured and underinsured population who have nowhere else to go. I know that not everyone is happy in the department, but you can't please everyone, and you certainly can't please everyone all the time. But at the end of the day, the needs of the community and the staff are being met. In the five weeks she has been acting director, she has made quite a few changes. She is proactive in terms of her management style. She is planning to recruit personnel to help GSA process requisitions and recruit personnel to assist DOA process recruitment packages to address staff shortages. She only managed to get the generator fixed in the Mingila facility so that during power outage, medications will be safe from temperature changes. Since she has been with public health for thirty years, she already is aware of the issues that need to be addressed. I know that she will be a good director for the department.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kanashiro. Is there any question for Dr. Kanashiro from the panel? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, doctors. You are excused, and I will call the mayors. Mayor Luhan? Mayor Ingata? Mayor Savars? Mayor Luhan was the first one to sign in this morning. Mayor of Inarahan, Doris Luhan. We also have with us Mayor Savars, the chairperson of the mayor's council, and Mayor Ingata of Mingila. We also have today a former judge, John Ominko. Sisus Massey for being here. Mayor Luhan.
Buenas tardes, Honorable Chairwoman Theresa M. Turlahi, members of the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land and Trust. For the record, my name is Doris Flores Luhan, Mayor of Inarahan, and I am currently a board member of the Guam Community Health Center. I am here to testify in support of the nomination of Mrs. Linda Ominko-Dinorsi to be confirmed as the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Mrs. Dinorsi has a proven record of leading and managing the Guam Community Health Centers and successfully delivered her role as a chief executive officer. The Guam Northern Region Community Center has achieved patient-centered medical home Level III recognition by the National Committee for Quality Assurance. The Guam Northern Region Community Health Center is the first in the Pacific to attain Level III recognition, Level III being the highest. A Health Resources and Services Administration, known as HERSA, operational site visit was performed in August twenty seventeen to conduct a compliance review of the HERSA nineteen program requirements. Eighteen out of the nineteen program requirements were complied with, which is equivalent to a high rating of ninety-five percent. The HERSA consultants commended Mrs. Dinorsi, the Community Health Center Board, and staff for their hard work and excellent job. The fee scheduled increase for Guam Community Health Centers was included in Public Law thirty-four forty-two, Section twenty-one, which states annual adoption of the current Medicare rate as the baseline rate for the Guam Community Health Centers, fee scheduled for the medically indigent program and Medicaid program effective January first, and plus five percent for the private insurance patients. Furthermore, HERSA grants management and Bureau of Primary Healthcare staff commended her on how the board collaborated with the Minatintay Quatro Nalejes de Turan, Guam, the Thirty-Fourth Guam Legislature, in increasing the sliding fee annually. Under her leadership, the newly renovated and expanded Southern Region Community Health Center in Inarahan was unveiled on May twenty-fourth, twenty-eleven. The new facility includes twelve exam rooms, a larger space for pharmacy, lavatory, and billing department, and offices for MIP eligibility, staff, WIC, and food stamp services. A new ten-thousand-gallon water tank, diesel tank, and generator will also allow the health center to function during a disaster. These are just a few examples of Mrs. Dinorsi's accomplishments, and I am confident that she will ensure people have the support, care, and treatment they need with the compassion, respect, and dignity they deserve. In my professional dealings with Mrs. Dinorsi, she has exhibited collaborative traits to ensure the board can come to a consensus. I have come to find her as a very articulate and community-oriented individual. With her record, she is fully qualified to be the next Director of Public Health and Social Services. Sisus Massey for giving me the opportunity to testify on Mrs. Linda Ominko-Dinorsi's nomination. I strongly urge the committee to confirm her as the Director of Public Health and Social Services. Put respetu on dankulu na Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Mayor Luhan. Sisus Massey. Any questions for the mayor? I'm asking whether they have questions, so in case you have to leave, you're good. All right. Mayor Ingata.
Good morning, Hafadee. For the record, I'm Mayor Alan Ingata from the beautiful village of Mingila. First off, good morning. I'm writing in the interest of the full support of the confirmation of Mrs. Linda Dinorsi, Director of Public Health. I'm sure you may know her. She's no stranger to the body, the panel, the halls of this legislature. I have full confidence in her ability to head the Department of Public Health as Director in the beautiful municipality of Mingila. I have the honor to work with her and her staff as mayor on issues as a board member of the Community Health Center Board of Directors. I had the opportunity to attend an off-island conference, National Association of Community Health Centers. She is and presently advocated for the department in numerous ways, securing funding, building relationships, and federal partnerships. I witnessed firsthand her compassion, her dedication, and her leadership, well-organized even to the point of impressive work ethics. I am sure you have viewed her resume. Need I say more? Grant her the blessings and support to continue the great work for the agency, community, and our island of Guam.
Sisus Massey, Mayor Ingata. Any questions? All right, Mayor Savars.
Mayor of Dedido and the chairperson for the Guam Community Health Centers Board. I have known Linda Ominko-Dinorsi since two thousand and six, as she began to grow the many programs at the Community Health Centers, specifically the Northern Community Health Center. The expansion of the Community Health Center in Dedido was a vision that Linda and her former boss, Dr. Binkley, dreamed about as they were working together at the Southern Health Center as part of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Linda put that vision that Dr. Binkley and she had together and submitted it in multiple grants, one to the National Community Health Center, the Health Resources Services Administration, or HERSA, and the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, which is GURA, which built the northern and southern community health centers. Other funding sources that she tapped on over the many years were Compact Impact and Department of Interior Grants and many, many more. The two facilities, the southern and northern community health centers, provide primary healthcare for the underserved population on Guam. Working with the National Health Service Corporation Court, the Guam Community Health Centers recruits physicians and providers to work in our facilities, which allows them to have twenty-five percent of their medical student loans forgiven for each year that they work in a southern underserved community health center, and Guam Community Health Center is considered an underserved area. Linda and her team bring services to the patients who cannot come to the health centers. Quarterly outreach clinics are provided to residents in the Gilbaza area, the Chalan de Sepulu, the Pagachau area in Aggett, and many, many more isolated and high-risk areas of our island community. Immunizations, fluoride varnishing, health screenings for patients, not just children, but adults, are just some of the services that are provided during these outreach clinics. Over the years, we have had to come to this body to request for separate bank accounts for our program income, which is a requirement by our grantors, change position descriptions as Dr. Kanashiro had mentioned, to justify our budget request. I have been honored to serve on the Guam Community Health Center Board since two thousand and six. As a working board, annual strategic plannings, monthly reviews of patients' concerns and cares, recruitment of providers, financial monitoring are just a few tasks that are necessary to assure that patient care is happening here at our health centers. We are a very diverse board representing the island community, both business community and users of the health center comprise this board. Seeing what Linda has done for the Guam Community Health Centers, I know that she has the passion to do more for the rest of the Department of Public Health and Social Services divisions. Her reputation and accomplishments speak for itself. The staff that she has at the Guam Community Health Centers have been prepared to serve the patient community in the absence of Linda. Like Dr. Kanashiro had mentioned, she's trained over three to take over her one position, but there are many more. It's a working unit in the health centers. All staff, whether they be providers or administrative staff, nurses, nurses aides, even the maintenance, all are working components of the Community Health Center. Everyone contributes to the UDS reports that are required. All our financial statements are in place. And yes, many times, the Department of Administration looks at our bank account and says, "Why is there seven million dollars and you're still asking for money from the government?" We are not asking. That money that's in our bank account is a rotating money. That money pays out every month. There's already different sources that, you know, we take money. That's program income coming in from the insurances, from the patient insurance. But it also pays providers. We have obligations. Pays for many things that helps the community center operate. Pays for our supplies. We're not coming back and knocking on your doors for additional budget. So the team that we have at the Community Health Centers, like I said, from all points, all work together. And that's because the skills that Linda has enabled them, she's given them tasks, and has allowed them to make decisions as well. I know that her skills will definitely be an asset to the Department of Public Health and Social Services team. She is a firm but compassionate for the people she serves. I support the nomination of the Leon Guerrero Tenorio Administration for Linda Ominko-Dinorsi to be the Director of Department of Public Health and Social Services. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Mayor Savars. Any questions for any of the mayors? Thank you very much again, Sisus Massey. I'd like to call Vicente C. Meno, Mr. James Gillen, former Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Dr. Margaret Hattori-Uchima, the dean of the College of Nursing at University of Guam, at the School of Nursing, Annette Ogun, Mary Ann Dezon, Evelyn Armia. Oh, if you didn't intend to do verbal testimony, it's okay then. Kin Paris, Mr. Wakin Paris. All right. We will proceed with this panel. Sisus Massey, again to all of you for being here today and your indicated support of the nomination. Mr. Gillen. Sorry, Mr. Gillen, may I ask Mr. Ben Meno to proceed? He was also from Inarahan, and second one to sign in, Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, saludo, manana sijus. Para i record, inano si Vicente Ben Meno, tau tan alan. Gigos bonito na song song, anai gaigi irekesan it's amoru. Lo zahuneng tingu, lokuinai, na gaigi gui edun alugat, itanu mamini, sembonito anai gaigi sang se, asa guantanta, mariagatnya, majulang itzalan. La baigi, magigi gui ni set utungu afanon, agaman hulu, purama gui ni mansungi. Antidi ba i hu na ayam du ni testimonion ni utugi. Utungu na mapunta si Linda na para ni i administration, imaga haga, para gui dau ge ilui i ahensian salud gui ni gi tanota. Sen magu du lau hanapiniti du sa ma maulika bilan mamini, deku afana palu du ti du. Guahu masanaku intelu gi board of directors. Ben fi onius di humamian si Linda como board of director. Impin kakasa si lun midu, si le muafutai manunon, gaige ugu no, ben fi onius. La gaigi ilainla i ni basta quatu. La kada du na i hu risigna. Ilainla i ni imaga lai no, nanganada si gi takti don si ge ku muntenua. Gaiga todi testimonion i gubietnu, ikatana i gubietnu, todi i gubietnu. Na ilainla i ni, Mr. Meno, you have to go back. Okay. Lo tauza ti ma papu siu di badde. Ilainla i ni freebie. Lo sen magu du sinidu, jan sinidures. La gaigi du gui ni, zo fafa na amdu, zo unai ni, inango ku. Na si Linda tauza akumparajonya, como uno gi dignu, rispetadun, unorabli. Mamis jan mani, ni hasetbi i tau tau itanu, inatibu gi ahensian i publiku. Zahuneng tingu sa titolu tumugu si Linda i kapasidatnya. Vanali kaan ginman malaguan du. Lo seswan mumu na dos. Guanana bubudu sa jan ginofana, choctu na i, duru duru dura mandam. Guai nanganada, biya gua ma gosmu. Tiogu magan, bueno. Tauza sin ya si Linda na pa ba akumpara, gui ni na krasin, choctu ipare salud, kululonya adi ma fanaan, i community dirt na salud. Munga man lajya, please, don't make the mistake. Jim Gillen, please don't get wrong. Public health and the Community Health Center is different. The Community Health Center is run by the board. Public health is with the food stamp and the welfare. Jim, you know that. Bulaman la lati gi man amkota gi fama guonta, ingu bukau. Da zahuneng tingu gi ningguahu. Isitbi sioku kontra gui da i inteli gente, i karakter, i kwalidad jan todo, matu chin ya. Di tibi aluk si Linda Superman, Supergirl. Pusmaila pa gu da ba i hu taitai gi fini English, inglatira i, di nege husa. Anai mapunta si Linda kanat si ni du maigu. De ku afana pera ba isangan. Ha fu du pera ba isangan, ni seswan mumu, seswan madgu mintu, todo. Pues unsi ma na diu si ge uhasu gi papa trunkunidu, gi menan gi ma mamika tunta di, de ku afana pera ba isangan. Bueno, chuli diploma dan ipapit do tutun. Tumugi papa, da maila da ba i taitai gi fini English. Honorable Senator Theresa Lai, Chairwoman for Health, inano si Ben Meno, Vicente Tau Tanalan, subject witness confirmation of Linda Dinorsi, Ayom Pinko Dinorsi, for the Director of Public Health and Social Services. Put fa boat, I want her to be confirmed, because I love her and I like her, and she's the best for the people of Guam. Hafadee jan saludo. For the record, my name is Vicente C. Meno, Ben Meno, Inarahan, beautiful village, historical. The past nineteen years, I have worked with Linda Ominko-Dinorsi as of the board of directors for the Guam Community Health Center, both north and south. This is the first time that I have written such a letter for someone that I know and respect. Linda is a very special person because of her brilliant knowledge, dedication, love of her job, and love of the people of Guam Community Health Center Clinic. She have worked countless hours without pay and have brought her work home to finish what is required to be done. You know this lady? They should charge her suffocat work. That's the law. It's in the law. Not very many people know her and understand or feel the responsibility and obligation. She have showed her at the CHC Chief Executive Officer, accepting the job for less pay. For less pay! Her affirmative action plan program reflect daily on all her work, and her leadership shine with the many success she have accomplished. Everyone can be a leader, but with her dynamic leadership, both north and south community health center clinic got a major renovation under her watch to the federal fund. Mayor Savars got that already. Mention it to you. And there's more. As I have said again, not very many people know Linda. Dynamic capability because of the board of directors is governing board. There are times when I disagree until she make a full explanation. That's me. Guamas, what winna board? I'm the worst board in there. And you can answer that, because I will not stop until I get the answer. And Linda is here, and that's me. But I work. We work together harmoniously, positively. Linda has a great ability writing the grant, federal government on Hill, for the Guam Community Health Center. And this I have said, Senator, Linda is the best grant writer you would ever find. And because writing grant is a very difficult, Linda's knowledge and skill in grant writing have been proven with the approval of Guam Community Health Center grant application. If you ask me, Senators, how she work with the board of directors, my answer would be very good and prompt. Maulik dalisto. Tiuma lefa. Three years ago, Linda and some of the board, including myself, attended the National Association of Community Health Center Conference in Washington, D.C. Through all the series of grant meeting, we met with several federal officials who reviewed Guam's grant application package. Many questions were asked, and at the end of our meeting, they were very pleased and impressed with the kind of program that Guam presented. Maria, the chairwoman and leader, said, "Your design is very good." I'm talking about the federal government back in Washington, D.C. And with due approval, I would like to integrate the Guam program to other state board of directors and make Guam a model. How proud we are that Guam will be the model for the fifty states and the U.S. territory and because of Linda's leadership. And of course, please don't forget the board. In closing, I want to point out to all the senators that the governor is very fortunate that this small lady, full of energy, with all her credentials, is able and ready to take action. This I know it would happen because Linda is responsible, trustworthy, committed for this very reason. It prompted me to write this letter as my support and witness to her confirmation for the Director of Public Health and Social Services. I want to thank her with all admiration and appreciation from the bottom of my heart as a board, for she have done a fine job and will continue to do so for the people of Guam. Dankulu na Sisus Massey. Who fit ma inano si Ben Meno, Vicente Tau Tanalan, anai majulang ikatsada. Thank you, manana sijus.
Manana sijus Massey, Mr. Meno. And thank you to all the Community Health Center Board members who are here and those who have served Guam in this capacity, Sisus Massey. Mr. Gillen.
Why do I have to follow him? Buenas tardes, manana sijus. Madam Chair, Senators, thank you for making the time for this. I mean, this is important enough to me that I left my ranch chasing pigs and cutting wood and planting to ask you to report out a positive recommendation for Linda Dinorsi's confirmation. I've known Linda for about seven years. I find her to be a very resourceful, hardworking, committed person, extremely smart. And when I say hardworking, I'm talking about... And when I say hardworking, I'm talking about, I used to think I worked hard. Two, three o'clock in the morning, working on either data sets or reports. You know, I asked her one time, because I'm always concerned about succession planning. You know, what happens when people leave? And I asked her one time, I said, you know, Lynn, what happens if you die and go to heaven? What happens to the community health centers? Because we really did find that, and Hersa found that she really was doing the job of three people. And, you know, at the salary that she was getting, it just didn't make any sense. And I'm glad that that finally got resolved and I appreciate the previous legislatures for, for getting that done. It wasn't easy, but Linda's very resourceful also. We've talked about problems with supplies and procurement in GSA. Linda actually very wisely was able to use program income and other resources to hire a person to sit down at GSA and just handle all of her stuff. And she was able to get things done quicker, get supplies faster. She took advantage of federal programs and, and very significantly reduced prices for prescription drugs that I wish we all could, you know, take advantage of. But it requires also that you pay within thirty days of invoicing. And that's not a government tradition, unfortunately. But the savings in the drugs alone, she takes advantage of all of these programs. Very, very forward thinking. The electronic health records, e-prescribing, all of these things that she's done in the community health centers that she will, I'm sure, bring now to the, to the central facility because that's another thing that we need to do. We're not really billing at that center. I can, I'm sorry to say, we, the department's not, not billing for services delivered at the central facility and, and, and we can for, for certain services. And we need to do that because the program income really can help either off, offset or add to making services even better. She, I, I think especially in, in the information technology sphere, she has really taken advantage of what's available and working on now interconnectivity between the patient health records and other providers, especially the hospitals. A lot of our patients who use the community health centers sometimes present at the hospital in, in pretty, you know, pretty bad shape. Some even who've never had services at all, or maybe have had one visit, present at GMH and they're ready to deliver. Doctors at GMH know nothing about them. So being able to share the patient record with the physicians is, is, is one, one thing we've always been trying to get done. And that's, you know, it's not an easy task because a lot of people have, a lot of docs have different platforms. The hospital may have a different information platform. But if Linda wants it done, it will get done. It's just a matter of the funding and there is funding. There's funding through Medicaid, there's funding through other sources that, that Linda's been able to, to leverage. And I have no doubt that she's going to be an excellent, excellent director. And she has a good partner with her deputy, Laurie Duñez, who has a lot of years of experience as a public health nurse, as, as an educator. I think it's, it's a good, good team. It's going to get a lot of, I think, very good things done. I have a lot of admiration for the work ethic that, that Linda has. The information that can be pulled out of the uniform data set that she is required to submit to her. Hersa is probably the most data hungry federal agency I've ever dealt with. It's just incredible how much data they want from us. And I always used to ask, well, okay, they have it, but what do they do with it? Because a lot of times we don't see much, but there is an awful lot of gold to be mined out of those data sets about who came to visit, what their condition was, what their blood sugars were, what their, you know, what their blood pressures were. And so there's all that opportunity to take these huge amounts of data and work with those to see how the outcomes are. Right now, I think my own experience with, with at least a northern health center is they are overwhelmed. Even though they've, they have a dedicated, hardworking staff, these quarterly outreach things are useful, but they're still episodic. You know, we really need to find, find a way to link those visits with more continuity. And I'm sure Linda's going to figure a way how to do that also. And using some of our private partners to get that done. Linda doesn't just rely on the government to do things. She, she will use any, any partner, anywhere, anytime to, to get things done. I, I have a lot of respect and admiration for her work ethic. And I'm sure that she will, going forward, make this department, and it's not only public health, it's social services, environmental health, senior citizens. It will be a good term under her leadership. So I urge you to report this out positively. Thank you.
Sidus maasi, Mr. Gillen.
Dr. Hattori Uchima.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Margaret Hattori Uchima. I'm the Dean of the School of Nursing and Health Sciences at the University of Guam. And we have social work, nursing and health sciences, which includes public health, pre-physical therapy and exercise science in our unit. I have just a little bit of a different perspective of Linda because we are outside of the CHCs and outside of, of the Department of Public Health. And so I kind of want to shed a little bit of light on that because some things happen behind the scenes that the public's not aware of and that, that you're not aware of. And without Linda, several things would not have been possible. I've had the opportunity to collaborate directly with her on many occasions. She's made it possible for our students in the nursing, social work and health sciences to work alongside her staff and to learn about the many needs of our island's residents. DPHSS is a critical resource for our students in that it is community based and focused on primary prevention of illness. While students also receive practicum instruction at the local acute care hospitals, DPHSS is the lone Gov Guam agency that sends nurses and other health workers beyond the facilities into the homes and villages of our people. Students see firsthand the importance of the public health system. Several years ago, and Director Gillen is aware of this, and we, we don't often talk about it. And he's been very, very supportive of us. But several years ago, there was a little bit of a crisis that we were facing in our community health nursing course. Our nursing students were not able to make home visits because of the lack of public health nurses, the lack of district nurses. For decades, nurses, our nursing students made home visits with the community health nurses. They learned about the needs, the health disparities and the living situations on our island. Due to nursing shortages and other factors, our students were unable to make these home visits, placing our community health nursing course and our program in jeopardy. And in fact, it was a few years prior to our site accreditation visit. So of course, as the dean, I, I panicked. Unfortunately, Ms. Dinochi, through her leadership and expertise in community health, allowed our students to work with her clinic staff, both in the facility and in the field as they did community outreach work. She understood that without the focus on visiting clients where they live and addressing the community health aspect of nursing, our students would receive a poor education and this would impact their future in healthcare. While this may seem like an insignificant example, it is not. As a former community health instructor and a home health and hospice nurse, I was distressed at the realization that our island's people are not receiving the care that they badly need. The lack of nurses visiting our elderly, our poor, our homeless, this is very troubling. Ms. Dinochi has made efforts through her work as the CEO for the Northern and Southern Regional Community Health Centers to address the needs of our population. And I honestly feel that many people are not aware that our island residents are not getting these critical visits in the home. I didn't even call Linda. Our faculty dealt with it and I knew, just knowing Linda and her care and love for our people, I knew that this problem would be solved and it, and it was easily solved. And as you know, our site visit for our accreditation was very successful. As the former Chair of the Guam Homeless Coalition, I called upon Linda to assist in forming a healthcare subcommittee for the homeless coalition. She immediately assisted, provided guidance, and most importantly, provided the nurses and staff to work in our outreach events to provide care to homeless and, homeless individuals and families from our shelters and in the community. Her staff, it was amazing. Her staff came, they had their laptops. We were at Catholic Social Service in Baragata. She was able to bring the technology that Director Gillen had talked about. We use technology to find out if clients had an existing record. She could schedule patients who needed follow-up care, and this was really groundbreaking. It allowed for continuity of care and prevented unnecessary duplication of services such as immunizations because her staff had access to the immunization database. Her commitment to improving the health of our people and her knowledge of population health management enables her to improve efficiency in any healthcare setting. For years, outreach events would be conducted without access to these DPHSS records. It was her ingenuity and management skills that has helped Guam advance to provide 21st century care in a public health setting. And I must say, this is not true in other settings, which I will not name. However, sorry. But as Director Gillen has mentioned, former Director, you know, Linda, Linda doesn't take no for an answer. In, in fact, when we, Dr. Joy and I brought this healthcare subcommittee to the coalition, Linda came to the first meeting and immediately said, okay, you know, we need to have follow-up. You can't just see homeless individuals and not provide follow-up. And she did more, her staff did more than, than what we had expected. And for years and years, our people have just accepted the status quo. We accept substandard care. And people don't realize that it's substandard care. And yet Linda knows that our people deserve more. And I've worked with DPHS since 2001 in my capacity as a community health faculty and as the dean of the school. I've seen many changes and improvements directly as a result of Ms. Dinochi's transformative leadership. She's able to successfully manage the overall financial operations of the two community health centers. The centers work with third-party payers, including Medicare and Medicaid. You've already heard that she writes for, receives and manages many federal grants. And this has allowed for expansion and improvements in services. The list of grants she's been awarded is impressive. She's able to manage personnel, facilities and finances. Her outstanding work history with the CHCs has prepared her to become the Director of DPHSS. The achievement of receiving the National Committee for Quality Assurance Seal of Approval for the Northern Regional Community Health Center as a Patient-Centered Medical Home Level Three is a testament to her skill. The approval from the NCQA is a major achievement as they are the recognized organization that assesses, that assesses quality in healthcare organizations. And as the mayor had said, Level Three is the highest level of recognition. And the Northern Regional Health Center was recognized for their high quality and strong management. And this is due to the excellence of Ms. Dinochi and her staff. She's mentored many of our nursing graduates and I've seen our graduates grow from novices to strong nursing leaders and managers. And several of them are part of the three that are going to, to succeed her in her, her former duties. She's encouraged their professional development and the results have been positive. She's a true leader and skilled manager. She's well respected in the healthcare community and well known for her dedication. Please consider my recommendation as you make the decision about her confirmation. She will make an excellent director and will continue to put the healthcare needs of our community at the forefront. There are many issues at DPHSS that must be addressed in order to improve the healthcare of our community. Ms. Dinochi is well aware of the agency's strengths and challenges. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of her confirmation.
Sidus maasi, Dr. Hattori Uchima. I also want to thank you for your, your testimony and your, your service to our community in all the different capacities. As you point out with Linda Dinochi, I know that you also are, are serving many roles for our community and really focused on improving healthcare. So I want to thank you personally for that. Are there any questions for your doctor? All right, so Mr. Kin Paris.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Honorable Senators of the 35th Guam Legislature. I came up here with four sheets of testimony. I don't think it's necessary to say anything anymore. We're not, we're here for confirmation. It appears that after all this testimony, we're really here for a canonization. You know, I met, I met Linda Dinochi about thirty-eight years ago. My wife was working with Linda, my late wife, was working with Linda up at public health, writing grants for healthy mothers, healthy babies, family planning and maternal-child health programs. And when, when I was up there one day, we were leaving, we were leaving the center and my wife said to me, one day, that young lady is going to be the Director of this department. And that was, that was over thirty years ago. Linda is, in my opinion, and this is, this is from, I've been with government for over forty years and with politics for a lot longer. This, this appointment by Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio is probably the, the two, the team, is probably the best director, deputy director combination this entire government has ever seen or ever will see. And I've been a member of three cabinets and I've never seen anything like this. Their, not only their, their experience and their educational qualifications, their work ethic, but just their dedication to the type of work that they do and their dedication to, to the people of this island. So it's not necessarily, it's, this is a confirmation hearing and you, you people will decide whether Linda Dinochi is going to be the Director of Public Health. But more so than just the confirmation, it's to show you just exactly what these, these people can do and what they have done. So no more needs to be said. I think what should be said to you guys is that I don't know that this cabinet, the Leon Guerrero-Tenorio Cabinet, is ready to deal with these two. Like, like Dr. Uchima said, Linda doesn't take no for an answer. And I can tell you right now that her deputy director doesn't take no for an answer. And that's sort of bias. But their, their ability to do this job is unquestionable. And now you guys have to decide whether their dedication is there. And I, I can tell you that because they don't take no for an answer, they're not afraid to raise their opinion. They're not afraid to give you, to give you their, their conclusions or their, whatever they do. They're not afraid. And I don't know whether anybody can be ready for that. And their, their dedication, their, their work ethic. I used to see Laurie four days a week. Now I see her one day a week because of this job. I asked Jill, though, Linda's husband back there, how many hours of, how many hours in the day do you see your wife? And I guess we, we demand our directors to, to be that way. I don't know if the rest of the directors that have been appointed are willing to work at that level. And so as far as public health is concerned, I don't think there's anymore has to be said. I think what has to be done is when these two get, or Linda gets confirmed, a notice has to go out to the rest of the cabinet members. You know, get ready because here they come. And that's really all I have to say. I read, I wrote, I sat down two days to write this thing. But after, especially after bisentti. You know, I'm, I'm really happy to be here. I've been with the government for over forty years. I have never, ever testified for a confirmation. And I do it this time because of, you know, as tribute to my wife, my late wife. But also because I know the, I know Linda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. I appreciate your, your perspective of forty years and different cabinets and.
Can I just say one thing? I'd like to invite the members of this committee, if you really want to see what, how Linda can work. In the transition report, there's a health information technology piece.
Yes.
That Linda wrote. If you want to see what she can do with data sets and with what she wants or she plans to do for the government as far as computerized and technology is concerned, read that piece. The, the transition report for healthcare, I had a little bit. The, the transition report for healthcare, I had a little bit to do with it, is very comprehensive. And for this committee, I, I would pick up a copy of that transition. Thank you.
Seduce, Masih, Mr. Paris. Thank you again to the panel for your test, oh, I'm sorry, Dr., one more, Dr. Anna Joy Mendez.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Dr. Anna Joy Mendez. I am a faculty of the University of Guam School of Nursing and Health Sciences. I am a nurse by profession. I come here to support Ms. Linda's appointment as the director of DPHSS. When I moved here in Guam in 2010, I considered myself like total stranger. So when you are a total stranger to the island, everybody has a clean slate, like I didn't know anybody. So when you start asking people who they are, there comes the description. Others are described that you are afraid already to come near them because of the description that precedes them. But when I ask who Linda DeNorsy is, this is the summary of what I got from people that I talked to. If you want to get things done, go to Linda DeNorsy. That was in 2010. I personally had a working relationship with her two years ago when a small grant was given to the UOG Cancer Research Center Community Outreach Team to help in the HPV vaccination. Now, listening to all the testimonies, the grant is very small. Then listening, then I reflected back, why did Linda give me that time, the focus, the attention when it was so small? Because I, I'm not here to talk about the grant. I am here to talk about, probably because she saw the gap that will be answered in that small grant. It focused on the very hard-to-reach population. That's why their success rate in the HPV vaccination is low because of several factors. We don't have time to talk about the factors. But I would like to tell you how I, what's my, what's my perspective of Linda's work ethics. She does not care what time you need her. Because probably she's busy from 8:00 to 8:00, I met with her several times, like 6:00 in the morning, and sometimes like it was already like eerie in our school of nursing building, like nobody was there, just Linda and I. Though we had several meetings with the team, there are so many things, intricate things that you need to do to get things moving. And she gave her time, even this one, I can testify, even if she's off-island on a personal leave, she will ask you, "Reach me," and it can be done. And she worked even when she's on personal leave, like that is hard to, that's hard to see in people nowadays. Then I will affirm what Dr. Weir said about doing the right thing. Part of that grant is that, because we go to the community, that we give, part, part of that is that staff that will go to the community will be given gas cards. These are very small money, $10, $20. So there was gas cards that are supposed to be given to the staff of public health. This is what Ms. Linda said, "Oh, no, not in this outreach. The DPHS public vehicles will be used, and it is very near, no gas cards." Linda loves her staff, but doing the right thing, she's not also, she, she, she does the right thing, you know what I mean? Then to end this, probably when there will be somebody from off-island that will come and see me and does not know Linda, I would repeat like, "Do you know Linda DeNorsy?" Then I would repeat, "If you want to get things done, go to Linda DeNorsy." Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mendez. Again, thank you to all the members of the panel. Your testimony is very distinguished and very helpful to the committee, seduce, Masih. I'd like to call, and I purposely held her, or second to the last is Dr. Lori Duñez. She's, Lori Duñez, Lauren Duñez, call her Lori. She is the Deputy Director for the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And Linda, if you can also join her, we will hear from you after Ms. Duñez. Thank you again, Deputy Director, for being here this morning, and please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Honorable Senators of the 35th Guam Legislature. My name is Lauren Duñez, a retired nurse administrator of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Bureau of Community Health and Nursing Services, also an adjunct faculty at the University of Guam and a health and nursing consultant for the Pacific region. I appear today before you to submit testimony in support of the confirmation of Mrs. Linda Umpinko DeNorsy as the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Before I continue, I'd like to say that everyone before me truly articulated exactly what Linda stands for. Mrs. DeNorsy is very passionate about her work, and that's, you can see it during the first week, we weren't going home until 7:00, 7:30 in the evening. I finally had to tell her, "We've got to go home before it gets dark." But she's committed, and, and she has all this vision of what the department should be like and how we service the community. When she was expanding the Northern and Southern Region Community Health Center, one of the things that she said to me is, "I want it to be what it should be, like the private sector, and I want the people to know that it's, they're important, whether they're indigent or whether they're disabled or what, that they were important to us. And so I want them to be proud of the, of the facility that they're going to be serviced at and the services they receive." I met Mrs. DeNorsy when she first came to public health as a health educator. I was very impressed with her ability to identify and address the needs of the client and the community, and every one of my nurse supervisors were also impressed. Mrs. DeNorsy's transfer to the Bureau provided us the opportunity to work with the leader who was focused, enthusiastic, organized, and passionate about what she did. She is a problem solver, she's a critical thinker, and always up to any challenge that would develop her professional growth. I have seen many employees come and go, and I've gone to the mainland, and one of the things that the administrators always say is, some of them ask, "What's in it for me?" Linda never asked that. It was always, "What can I do?" Under the leadership of the Bureau's senior nurses, she learned to write grants, which prepared her for her future role as Chief Executive Officer of the Bureau of Primary Care Services. She is organized and executes around priorities. Mrs. DeNorsy is a very creative person and an imagination that is evident in the expansion of both the Northern and Southern Region Health Center. How many centers have the units and the areas that her center had? How many have a backup to a backup of a generator? I'm, I'm really very impressed. You're never going to see that the power is down in both the Northern and Southern. And now she's working diligently to make it happen also in Central. I asked her where she found the funding for the expansion of the two centers, and she said it came from several funding sources. She heard what others were doing, and she said, "Why not us?" And so she went for it. She improved the centers so it met national standards and is very proactive, as evident by the generators she procured for the Northern and Southern centers. To demonstrate her commitment to improving quality, she contracted me to write the Quality Assurance, Quality Improvement Manual for the department, not just her area, but for the department, and the medical protocols that address the healthy people, health objectives for the Bureau. One of the things that I can say about Linda is that she's not selfish with whatever she has. If it would help and benefit others, she would do it. When she was setting up the health information technology, she asked the other agencies to buy in. She wasn't just doing it for her Bureau. So she said, "Look, there's a good thing, and I can use my funding. Are you interested?" And sadly to say, a lot of them didn't want to move out of their comfort zone, but she proceeded, and she has one of the best HIT system in healthcare, where they're speaking to each other, at least the Northern and Southern. I'm honored that Mrs. DeNorsy approached me to be her deputy director. In one week, I saw her take ownership of the problems. And Kim Paris always tells me, "You can't, you have to take ownership the very first day," and she did that. And the problems that existed in the department immediately responded to resolving the procurement, safety, maintenance, custodial, and recruitment issues. A lot of it because of lack of funding, but she's very resourceful. Like everyone said, she doesn't take no for an answer. The department is the third-to-the-largest in the government, and with the many mandates in environmental health, licensing, vital statistics, and public health, it can no longer be neglected. Funding cannot be taken from this department and transferred to other areas. And I know that Linda will protect that. She's shown it in the community health centers. No one touches the money that, that's there. I am very confident that Mrs. DeNorsy will provide the necessary justification and evidence-based data that the legislature needs to restore the department to the level that it is able to carry out the healthy people's vision to increase quality and years of healthy life to individuals of all ages. Thank you for the opportunity to support Governor Lou Leon Guerrero's nomination of Mrs. Linda Umpinko DeNorsy as Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I encourage the legislature to confirm Mrs. DeNorsy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Duñez, and thank you also for your service in the capacity of deputy director and for your service over all these years in healthcare and increasing the quality of life for the people of Guam. And now, without any further ado, Ms. Linda DeNorsy.
Good morning, Senator Theresa Lahey, Chairperson of the Committee of Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land Justice, and members of the 35th Guam Legislature. My families, they're all in the front row. My brother John, my other brother, I call him Brother Bob, my sister-in-law Maria, and my sister Arlene Umpinko Pierce, and of course, the love of my life and the strong and the rock of everything that I do, a very, very wonderful, supportive husband, Mr. Jill Do DeNorsy. He took off from work just for me. Thank you. And of course, my beautiful board members, my family, my second family, the Department of Public Health employees, and also all my partners that we've partnered with throughout the years and friends. My name is Linda Umpinko DeNorsy, and I am the seventh of eight children of Juan Martinez Umpinko and Fidelis Sablan Umpinko of Baragata. I thank you, senators, for taking the time out to be here today and to witness my presence and, of course, the support of my nomination. And of course, all of you who are here today to provide your written and oral testimony on my behalf in support of my nomination as the Director of Public Health and Social Services. I received my high school diploma from the Academy for a Lady of Guam in 1982, and you were there too, Senator, you were about a year ahead of me if you didn't remember. And I went on to college and acquired my undergraduate degree in biological science from University of San Francisco in San Francisco, California in 1988, graduating summa cum laude, and receiving a master's degree in public health from San Jose State University in San Jose, California. In 2005, I completed a Johnson &amp; Johnson Healthcare Executive Program, which is sponsored by the UCLA School of Management, the Health Resources and Service Administration, or HERSA, and the Johnson &amp; Johnson Foundation that educates professionals in executive roles so that they develop community improvement projects and become effective health executives having acquired skills in leadership, management control, finance, health economics, medical informatics, marketing, outreach, and advocacy. After completing my formal education, I returned to Guam to pay off my University of Guam Professional Technical Scholarship, and I feel that I'm so indebted to this island because they paid my entire education expense. I am humbled, grateful, and honored for the confidence placed in me by Governor Lou Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio for nominating me as the Acting Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I am here today to testify my commitment, my readiness to serve as a Director of Public Health and Social Services, to be a change agent and lead the department in achieving its mission to assist the people of Guam in achieving and maintaining their highest level of independence and self-sufficiency in health and social service welfare programs. Working with the Department of Public Health and Social Services for 28 consecutive years, starting as a health educator and then climbing up the executive ladder as the Health Services Administrator and to the Camille Center Chief Executive Officer position, has strengthened my leadership, interpersonal communication, negotiation, and grant-writing skills, and has also allowed me to develop the analytical, the problem-solving, and decision-making capabilities. These skills, capabilities, and two decades or 20 years of experience are essential in overseeing the personal, operational, facility, and financial management of two health centers, the Northern Region, and now even a greater role in directing the management and operation of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. The Department of Public Health and Social Services is really a huge department, a government of Guam in which there are 438 employees, and of this number, 178 are locally funded, 152 are federally funded, and 108 are both federally and locally funded. The department is also comprised of five major divisions, the Division of Public Health, and that's by Dr. Kanashiro, the Division of Public Welfare, Tess Archangel, the Division of Environmental Health, Tom Nadeau, the Division of Senior Citizens, Mr. Artsen Augustin, and of course, the General Administration of the Department, which is under our jurisdiction, which is the Division of General Administration. The department's FY 2019 total budget amounts to $273 million, 62.5 in local funding, and of course, the other part is the federal funding of $210.5 million. 151 of the 438, or 34% of the public health employees are eligible to retire at any time. I'm one of those people. I am an individual that moves forward in making transformational changes. I love to think outside of the box, develop networks, and establish strong partnerships with public health and social services programs, private health clinics, government and private hospitals, and nonprofit organizations in leveraging resources in the community. When I was promoted to take the helm of the two federally qualified health centers, there was only at that time in 1988, 22 staff, and today, the Camille Center staff quadrupled, 80 staff now. The Camille Center Medical Director, Dr. Paula Brinkley, and I shared a vision to build the communal centers on Guam. As the Health Service Administrator in 1998, the Department of Public Health and Social Services Director at that time was Dennis Rodriguez Senior. He instructed Dr. Paula Brinkley and I to convert the Dedido Public Health Clinic- He instructed Dr. Paula Brinkley and I to convert the Dedido Public Health Clinic into a primary healthcare center. At this time, it was just a maternal and child health clinic providing preventive prenatal care and postpartum care services. Without any local financial resources, a limited number of personnel, insufficient equipment, neither a laboratory nor a pharmacy unit, Dr. Brinkley and I aggressively began to seek federal grant opportunities to establish a primary care clinic. In 1998, we applied for a new access grant from the Health Resources and Service Administration, and Guam was awarded an additional $200,000 in federal funding. So the funding increased from $184,470 in 1984 to $383,470 in 1988. Since that time, I became the Health Services Administrator. The communal centers hired a full-time practitioner through the National Health Service Court, and the Northern Region Communal Center opened its doors as a new federally qualified health centers, having operating and continues to operate for 21 consecutive years. With great enthusiasm and motivation, we sought more federal grant opportunities, including the Capital Improvement and the Community Development Block Grant from 2004 to 2006. Thus, we had four major grant awards, and again, that was clearly expressed, and so there was a total of $3.9 million for the northern expansion and renovation. With the northern expansion and renovation completed, I was at the Department of Public Health Budget Hearing, and the late Senator Ben Panglinan asked me if I can also expand and renovate the Northern Region Communal Center like the way I did with the northern health center. I told him yes, if given adequate resources. Next thing, $6 million fell from the sky from the tobacco asset back bonds, and this funding was earmarked for the southern renovation and expansion of an additional $19,638 square feet, and it went from $14,989 to $34,627 square feet. However, the communal center staff and I dreamed big, and we had the motivation to make southern even better than the north. Realizing that southern neither had a generator nor a water tank, essential utility infrastructure during a power and water outage, the goal to build such infrastructures was very essential for us to keep the communal centers operating, especially during power outages at that time is very frequent, remember the brownouts, and as well as during emergency disasters. Southern region also is really the last village to get power and water restoration back after a typhoon. The day came for me to assume the leadership role as the Health Services Administrator at southern. When I came to southern, the computer was so obsolete, there was only computers that have floppy disks in an era of computers with disks drives. There was no generator. Generator seems to be the love of my life, and it continues to be where I'm at today. I became very fearful, and I was told that southern may remain open during a disaster, and I along with the staff will be tasked to keep southern open throughout the storm. Having fear of no power, my first project was to procure and install a brand-new generator. Feel like history repeats itself. I'm now tasked to do that for the Central Manila Public Health Clinic today. Thus, I began with, you know, using my great writing skills and applied for more federal grants, and we were awarded $562,000 in the Community Development Block Grant, the Community Development Other Grants, and the Department of the Interior. And then we also applied for a grant from the Capital Improvement or ARA. I don't know how many of you were in the government at that time. ARA was the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act in 2009, and it was a stimulus bill to get the economy back to shape and to give recovery from an economic downturn that began in the late 2007. And of course, we have program income funding. So thus, a total of about $7,689,185 was awarded for the southern expansion. Hence, the expansion and renovation of northern and southern communal centers are just examples of transformational changes that became a reality through multiple successful grant awarding awards, resulting in millions of dollars to Guam. Other examples of transformational changes include the implementation of the Resource Patient Electronic Health Record System and enrolling five Department of Public Health Programs into the 340B Drug Discount Pricing Program, achieving patient-centered medical home level three level recognition for the northern, and of course, implementing telemedicine. The 340 Drug Discount Pricing Program was a project that really took three years to launch, from the planning to its final implementation. It's very complex, and it starts off with many things that have to be done prior to this, such as establishing a line of credit with a bank that has an A rating. I think that's when I started learning and knowing about Bank of Guam, because we used the fiduciary advisory called the Wells Fargo's Bank to get that started. And we also advertised requests for proposals. We had to have contracts with the national pharmacy distributors that have an existing agreement with HERSA, the Office of Pharmacy Affairs, and we had to establish electronic ordering of medications directly with the national pharmacy distributor. We had to maintain physical and virtual inventories of both the 340B and the non-340B pharmaceutical drugs. We had to establish 340B policies and procedures and establish a pharmacy and therapeutics committee. Completing the 340B Drug Discount Pricing Program application was really a really tough thing because we had to streamline the government of Guam's procurement process of one to two months down to one week, and training public health staff and DOA agency staff on streamlined processing was a necessary thing to do. The 340B project was recognized as the most innovative and cost-effective project, winning the governor's magnificent pro award, and more importantly, the project saved the government of Guam hundreds of thousands of dollars in the procurement of pharmacy drugs. And let me give you an example. We can purchase insulin for just 10 cents through this program in lieu of over $100 from the local pharmacies in Guam. The savings on supplies allows public health to reprogram the use of this money saved to recruit more professionals, personnel, and have the resources to cover operational costs. Moreover, with great enthusiasm, the communal centers and I shared a vision in getting the communal centers to achieving the patient-centered medical home recognition from the National Committee of Quality Assurance. And with dedication and with hard work of my staff, I had three wonderful nurses that were with me by my side and did a lot of work together, and the region was transformed into a patient-centered medical home from the National Committee for Quality Assurance. And this is a highly recognized nonprofit organization that gives recognition that a center or a hospital is widely recognized and well-managed, and it delivers high-quality care and service. Over the next years, I continued writing expanded medical capacity grants to recruit more providers and of course, to extend our community health center hours of operations in the evenings and on Saturdays. Thus, the communal center federal grant went from, when I first started, $184,470 in 1984 to now $2,283,000 in 2019. And so the overall amount increased now from $300,000 in 1984 to $6,516,146 in 2019. And as I mentioned earlier, the staff quadrupled to 80. Having been a health educator and realizing that education, long-distance learning is a key in empowering young minds to achieve undergraduate and graduate degree, I took the leap of being a perceptor for the University of Guam School of Nursing Leadership Course. I perceptive several nursing students, and I hired one of them after she completed her bachelor's degree in nursing. As a student, she learned the qualities of an effective leader, and one of which is to implement transformational changes. Additionally, I empower my staff, including her, to pursue a higher level of education to move up the nursing ladder by going back to school to advance their education. Recently, I provided a letter of recommendation, and in FY 2019, she was accepted and is accepted right now into the Master's of Science Nursing Program. Additionally, I perceptive two Masters of Public Health students attending the University of Guam at Manoa in Hawaii, and another one from the University of Southern Florida. As a perceptor, it builds workforce development in Guam, which is dearly needed given Guam's remote geographic location. As the public health director, I plan to empower other public health staff to be perceptors to University of Guam and GCC students and other graduate students so that they can be groomed to become tomorrow's leaders and make the choice to work at the Department of Public Health. Other than empowering young minds to pursue a higher level of education and a degree, I, the goal that providing long-distance learning like telemedicine and telehealth services in rural areas also became a reality through the establishment of partnership with Good Samaritan Hospital in Los Angeles, California. The Department of Public Health Bureau of Healthcare Financing and Administration staff, myself, the communal centers, and the WIC program, we all teamed up together in applying for a grant from USDA, Department of the Agriculture. We received $470,560, and there was a local match that was done by Good Samaritan Hospital for $213,209. And because of this, we are now implementing telemedicine in Guam. And so the statistics show as of 2017 to 2018, 51 low-income uninsured residents of Guam received telemedicine, 43 dermatology, and eight rheumatology services, and dozen of WIC clients received nutrition education via telehealth. Telemedicine and telehealth services bridges gaps in the lack of specialty care service in Guam, such as dermatology, rheumatology, and of course, dieticians that are registered. Moreover, these services are cost-effective in that patients don't have to travel thousands of miles away in the United States to receive specialty care and education. There are other milestones of accomplishment, but I will end there given the time limitation. If confirmed as the Director of Public Health and Social Services, I will lead the agency in moving forward in making health and social services more affordable, available, and easily accessible to the low-income, uninsured, and underinsured populations who are most in need and least able to find care. This is the goal of Governor Lou Leon-Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio. Other goals shared with the Leon-Guerrero administration include increasing public awareness and education and preventing infectious communicable diseases, sexually transmitted diseases and non-communicable diseases, promoting health and wellness to individuals with medical conditions to properly control their diseases, lessening the unnecessary utilization of hospital emergency room, promptly having individuals seek medical attention to prevent hospitalization and readmission, which are far more costly than primary care and preventive services. Additionally, as the Director of Public Health, I plan to move the Division of Public Health forward in controlling the outbreaks of diseases by strengthening its and improving its electronic laboratory reporting and public health surveillance system, increasing the percentage of children immunized by making vaccines available to the community, hiring more community nurses, and increasing immunization outreach activities, enhancing education to properly control non-communicable diseases such as cardiovascular diseases, diabetes, colorectal, breast, and cervical cancer, and collaborating with the Office of Guam Technology and University of Hawaii Telecommunications and Social Informatic Staff to provide technical assistance in enhancing health information technology by procuring a vital statistics software, establishing an online health professional and allied health professional licensing system, implementing personal health record, and having system interoperability to exchange patient health information between public health and private health clinics and local hospitals. As a Director of Public Health, I also plan to move forward in preventing and controlling outbreaks of preventable diseases by, again, improving the national notifiable diseases and strengthen and improving the electronic laboratory reporting and the public health surveillance system of public health. The reporting of national notifiable disease is a priority. It's crucial to have data on disease trends, especially when there is a sudden surge of infection. Currently, Guam's hepatitis data is inaccurate, which is attributed to the lack of reporting of patients having either chronic or acute hepatitis. The Public Health Territorial Epidemiologist is currently researching hepatitis A, B, and C cases on Guam, especially with the increasing number of hepatitis cases. As a public health director, I recently sent letters to health providers to notify them that they need to regularly report the national notifiable diseases to public health, and this would help in having a more accurate data on reportable diseases on Guam. Other than reporting the national notifiable diseases, I plan, as mentioned earlier, to strengthen and improve the electronic laboratory reporting and public health surveillance of public health and make vaccines available in the community. Public health really has to progress from a manual to an electronic reporting of the national notifiable diseases like measles and pertussis and polio, Zika, hepatitis, malaria, gonorrhea, and so forth, to the United States Centers for Disease Control, or CDC. In doing so, public health can obtain technical assistance and financial resources from USCDC to contain disease outbreaks before it becomes widespread. Additionally, public health surveillance system must be enhanced to identify health indicators that serve as warning signals for any potential disease outbreaks, and in doing so, public health can timely and effectively respond to any potential disease outbreaks. Additionally, in an effort to increase the percentage of children vaccinated to prevent disease outbreaks, vaccines must be readily available. More communal health center nurses and health nurses in general have to be hired to administer these shots, and the public health must take a proactive approach in increasing immunization outreach activities. As the Director of Public Health, strategies to increase immunization rates on Guam include administering vaccines daily without any limitation and making vaccines for children's services easily available and accessible at central public health clinics, northern region communal centers, the schools, public and private clinics, WIC clinics, malls, villages, and isolated areas without running water, power, and a sewer system. Furthermore, immunization outreach activities and extended outreach activities would be more frequent, it'll be every month, to reduce the incidence and prevalence of preventable diseases like measles, rubella, hepatitis, HPV, zoonster, and varicel, et cetera. Bringing the healthcare provider and public health staff and the community partners to these isolated areas minimizes transportation, socioeconomic, language, and cultural barriers to care services. Furthermore, health promotion and education activities will continue to be provided in villages to increase public awareness of non-communicable diseases such as cardiovascular diseases, the number-one disease problem on Guam, diabetes, cancer, and you know, cancer is very important, right, Senator? Which are really serious problem in Guam and also the Pacific Islands. The US Health Services and Resources Service Administration, or HERSA, identified diabetes as a top priority. So they have a diabetes initiative, and they aim to reduce complications associated with these diseases such as amputations, retinopathy, neuropathy, chronic kidney disease, and state-regional disease, et cetera. Public health is currently launching the Living a Healthy Life with Chronic Conditions, or what is called the CDMMP, which is the Train the Trainer Program, which allows workshops at public and private clinics and community-based organizations and nonprofit organizations so that they, their health professionals can become leaders to conduct these workshops in the community. And this empowers patients to conduct ways in which they can be empowered to address their chronic conditions and to develop the skills like eating healthy and taking their medications and knowing about how to combat hypo-hyperglycemia and pain and fatigue, et cetera, and how to take not only their medications regularly but also do blood glucose monitoring, and of course, manage their stress, their anxiety, depression, and to have better control of their disease and minimize comorbidity complications that may occur. Additionally, I plan to move forward in implementing the Diabetes Management Module of the RPMS Electronic Health Record System so that every patient with diabetes has a care plan for the control of the disease, whether they have a foot exam, eye exam, hemoglobin A1C, and creatine, their smoking depression, and other diabetes management goals. By establishing this diabetes registry, this will improve case management of patients with diabetes, and they will have the patient care electronically documented, and this will allow the sharing of health information with the private health clinics, the local hospitals, through health information exchange, especially when a patient is being referred for specialty care or for inpatient care services at the hospital. In doing so, care is comprehensive, continuous, well-coordinated, and culturally appropriate. Other than diabetes control, colorectal, breast, and cervical cancer are really serious health problems in Guam. It cannot be ignored. There is a need to create a Guam colorectal cancer screening program for the 50- to 75-year-olds that are below 250% of poverty level. Through partnership with, of course, Guam Cancer Care, EOG Cancer Research... Through partnership with, of course, Guam Cancer Care, EOG Cancer Research, private providers, public health clinics, the colorectal cancer screenings such as fecal occult blood test, colonoscopy, and sigmoidoscopy would be provided to at least three hundred individuals at risk for cancer. Funding for this program can be secured from Guam Cancer Care Trust Fund or the Healthy Futures Fund. Additionally, as Director of Public Health, I plan to move the Division of Public Health forward in also applying for a cancer survivorship supplemental federal grant, which will enhance current cancer care program so that the patients and the survivors of cancer can have a better lifestyle. The objectives of these include surveillance to monitor their needs, establishing survivorship planning so with the usage of an electronic health record system, and establishing a patient navigation program within the department. And cancer patients and providers on survivorship care guidelines and follow-up would be something they will know about, and of course participating in telehealth. The department also continues implementing, of course, you know, Senator, my good Senator over there, Munia, that Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program offers breast and pap smear testing to low-income women at no cost. Although this program receives federal funding, it is limited. However, this dilemma can be addressed by working with you Senators to amend legislation so that a percentage of the Cancer Trust Fund can be available to the Breast and Cancer Early Detection Program. I also plan to move forward with health information technology by working collaboratively with the Office of Technology, or OTAC, and of course procuring and installing a vital statistics registry so that all births, low birth weight, congenital anomalies, causes of death, marriage and birth and divorce data are electronically documented in lieu of being manually recorded. Manual data entry contributes to delays in the collection of vital statistics data. However, with a new software system, it would lessen the long patient wait time to acquire a birth, marriage, death certificates, thus improving the clinic flow through the efficiency of the Office of Vital Statistics resulting in better, and patients will be smiling at public health not going like this. Furthermore, having an electronic vital software statistics would allow public health to promptly enter demographic data and international classification of disease codes to provide the most up-to-date vital statistics data, which is crucial in demonstrating Guam's healthcare needs in any federal grant application. It's called the Needs Assessment portion of your grant when you write grants. Funding for the Office of Vital Statistics Software will be derived from their special revenue fund. These are revenues generated from the birth, death, and marriage certificate fees, marriage license application fees, and of course the burial transient permit fees, adoption, affidavit of paternity, paternity, and amendment fees. Other than having a vital statistics software, I plan to establish an online health and allied health professional licensing system so that these individuals can apply for initial and renewal of licenses, including licensure verification electronically, instead of them having to come physically to the health professional licensing office to submit these documents. This will expedite the issuance of health and allied health certificate licenses. The online licensing system will also maintain a centralized registry of all our health and allied health professionals on Guam. We will have also an alert system for disease outbreaks, an emergency notification of all natural or man-made disasters, and a pre-verification system for credentialing of health licenses so that health professionals can be activated in an emergency and/or a disaster. Additionally, having identified funding, I plan to enter into a MOA understanding, Memorandum of Understanding, with the Office of the Attorney General for the provision of legal services with the hiring of two part-time attorneys from the AG's office, one for the attorney of the health professional licensing boards and the other one for public health. Furthermore, I strive to move forward in implementing personal health records so that public health clinics and the northern and southern clinics have the interoperability with private health clinics and local hospitals in their electronic health record systems through an HL7 engine resulting in the exchange of patient health information. That's enough for public health, don't you think? I'll move on to my next division, which is the Division of Public Welfare. Of course, maximizing the usage of federal funding is a top priority. The Chief of the Division of Public Welfare, the Healthcare Financing Administrator, and I met with you, Senator Turlahey, remember, on January twenty-fourth, sixteen days right after my initial date as the Acting Director, to discuss, of course, the Medicaid federal program grant awards, the current Medicaid expenditures, current available funding as of January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and the two thousand nineteen projected Medicaid expenditures, and the total projected FY two thousand nineteen shortfall based on current claims processing. On February seventh, two thousand nineteen, I along with the aforementioned staff participated in the public hearing on Medicaid. All of you were there, I think, I call. During the public hearing, financial information has been disclosed in that we had seventy-five point nine million on federal Medicaid grant awards, and the current expenditure and encumbrance as of January thirty-first was fifty-two million, and the current available funding as of January thirty-first amounts to twenty-three point two million. And additionally, the two thousand nineteen total expenditures for Medicaid amounted to one hundred and sixteen point two million. Thus, the total projected shortfall, if you remember from that public hearing on the current claims processing, was forty point three million, twenty-six million for the federal and thirteen point three million in the local matching. And then Senator Sinagastin asked me, you know, everybody needs money, so what are you gonna do? You go back to the governor and ask to meet with her. So we did. I listened to him. On February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, all of us went to the governor. We met with her to discuss strategies for obtaining the thirteen point three million local Medicaid match. Of course, there's so many strategies that are being done. In fact, she's right now at Washington DC, and we gave her all the bullet points when she meets with the federal officials, so we can be creative and innovative to identify ways to address this issue. And one of the strategies that she will present is to request Congress to extend the ACA, you know, the Affordable Care Act, timeline of September thirty, two thousand nineteen to a later date so that Guam maximizes the usage of Medicaid federal grant dollars. In doing so, residents can increase access to medical services. In addition, another priority relative to the Medicaid program is to submit a grant application to avail ninety percent federal funding and ten percent local match for a new Medicaid Management Information System and eligibility enrollment system to improve Medicaid claims processing and eligibility functionality. Moreover, I plan to improve the timeliness of welfare application processing and reduce clients' complaints through the establishment of a service call center. It's a phone call system as a means for them to communicate with their program staff, especially for eligibility certification. If you go to public health upstairs, it's so overly crowded. I feel so sorry for all those people that are sitting and waiting. You put yourself in their shoes. We're trying to do something about that. So having a service call center really can improve the efficiency of program operations. Call center staff, of course, members, they have to be trained in knowing the different welfare programs in order to handle all the calls and inquiries of basic questions on programs such as Medicaid, MIP, the SNAP program, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance program, the Temporary Assistance to the Needied Families, or TANF, and et cetera, and also refer specific issues to the appropriate program specialists. By having a call center, welfare staff can efficiently focus their efforts in certifying, recertifying, or denying household eligibility instead of answering telephone calls. Additionally, it would lessen the frustrations of clients not being able to talk to the appropriate welfare staff to obtain essential information. Other than establishing a call center, I plan to enhance the existing public health welfare assistance processing system by implementing a mobile access feature to improve the client accessibility to public assistance services and streamlining process of their application. Furthermore, with a mobile application and a kiosk system, this will improve customer service by getting updates of the status of the public welfare assistance applications that they submit, informing them about the frequently asked questions so they don't ask the same questions over and over, about their benefits and policies, and viewing online eligibility requirements, viewing their scheduled appointments, checking in for appointments, and obtaining their email reminders. Furthermore, in two thousand eighteen, one thousand three hundred sixty-one referrals were made to Child Protective Services, or CPS, involving two thousand thirty-nine children. There are currently two hundred fifty-seven foster care children under CPS custody and thirty-five licensed foster care homes. As the Director of Public Health, it would be a priority to ensure that children living in an environment exposed to any form of child abuse and neglect be removed from such unhealthy environment and placed in a temporary transitional shelter and foster care homes. Increasing the number of foster care homes for children that are placed under either temporary custody of Bolsa would be another priority. This will be accomplished with our partnership, of course, with the Regalo Foundation, a nonprofit organization, to promote awareness and advocacy for foster care through the media, program presentations, and community outreach activities. And as you know, there are four foster care emergency shelters, the Ali Shelter, the number one, there's Ali Shelter number two, Guma San Jose, and Guma Iminaasi Shelter. The Guma Iminaasi Shelter, as you know, is currently being constructed, and it is done through a grant by the Office of Insular Affairs, and it is going to be completed in July two thousand nineteen. So the department plans to issue a request for proposal for the administration of this foster care group home, which houses twelve children in that custody of CPS. Other than child abuse and neglect, intimate partner violence, family violence, dating violence, stalking, and human trafficking must be addressed. Thus, I plan to continue collaborating with the Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Family Violence to implement Project Catalyst Two. It's a federally funded program to promote territory-wide policy and system changes that support an integrated and improved response to intimate partner violence, family violence, dating violence, stalking, and human trafficking in community health centers and domestic violence programs, whether they're profit or nonprofit organizations. Memorandum of Understanding have been entered between the Northern Region Health Centers and each of the following domestic violence programs: St. Anthony Church, the Gay and Lesbian Association, or GALA, Legal Guam Legal Services Corporation, Guma Mommy, and Victims Advocates Reaching Out, or VARO. The Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Violence and Family Violence headed by my good friend Cynthia Kabut, she's here today, whom I had the pleasure of working with, has really taken the leadership role in this project. This program aims to ensure that there is access to medical services and support services for survivors of intimate partner violence, family violence, dating violence, stalking, and human trafficking, and to promote prevention. Northern Region Camille Centers will use the model intervention identified by Futures, which is contracted, to do this type of work for assessment and response to intimate violence and all these dating violence, stalking, and human trafficking, and participate in, we're gonna also do quality improvement activities. On the other hand, the domestic violence programs like the Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Family Violence, St. Anthony Church, GALA, Legal Service Corporation, Guma Mommy, and VARO will receive referrals from the Camille Centers, and through such collaboration, education, and harm reduction strategies would be provided to improve the health and safety outcomes for survivors of intimate partner violence, dating, stalking, and human trafficking, and promote prevention. Okay, I think I need to take a little drink of water, don't you think? Other than the Division of Public Welfare, we're now going to the Division of Environmental Health, which issues about thirty-five thousand health certificates, three thousand two hundred sanitary permits, three hundred fifty Guam-controlled substance registration, and a handful of exhumation approvals annually. You know, that means the people that are dead, right? To exhume them, their bodies out. The Division of Environmental Health has priorities, and these priorities include conducting compliance inspections of the nearly three thousand regulated establishments, fully implementing the Controlled Substance Program, number three, filling existing vacantly funded positions to accomplish many mandates to ensure safety, expansion of health certificate training courses to non-food categories, establishing overall revenues to sustain and improve operation, the operational expansion of the food and mosquito laboratory, and pursuing its certification and/or standardization so that it becomes the reference lab for the entire Pacific region, and transitioning from the existing database system into a file maker platform to reduce cost. The Division of Environmental Health conducts compliance inspections, as I mentioned earlier, of three thousand health-regulated establishments in Guam, which includes, of course, food facilities, eighty percent of all these regulated establishments are food facilities, institutional facilities, cosmetic establishments, tattoo shops, public pools, and hotels. Section two-one-one oh three of Title X, Chapter Twenty-One, mandates that all health-regulated establishments be inspected once every quarter or four times a year. With three thousand establishments, you do the mathematics, this calculates to twelve thousand compliance inspections annually. Unfortunately, the Division of Environmental Health has only been able to perform an average of one thousand two hundred, or ten percent, of inspections each year of the required number of inspections. Thus, the absence of routine and frequent compliance inspections of health-regulated establishment poses as a potential health and safety hazard. Fortunately, nearly all the food facility closures that occurred in two thousand eighteen were the result of inspections that were performed due to public complaints. Had it not been for the concerned citizens reporting the unsanitary conditions of these health-regulated establishments, the Division of Environmental Health would not have been discovered these violations until many years later. Moreover, a foodborne illness outbreak can adversely impact the health of hundreds of people on Guam and Guam's economy. Thus, it is to increase inspections of all health-regulated establishments, it is crucial to recruit four public health officers and two environmental public health supervisors. Moreover, the Division of Environmental Health implements a Controlled Substance Program, which is responsible for investigating healthcare professionals, pharmacies, and private individuals suspected of diversion of pharmaceutical-controlled substances such as sedatives and painkillers into illicit activities via, they do inspections of healthcare facilities, they look at record audits and examine, examine all the prescription records. Complaints of prescription forgeries and abuse by healthcare practitioners have not been acted upon or timely acted upon of these Controlled Substance Program due to the lack of funding. However, with the establishment of the Controlled Substance Diversion Fund, or we call it C S D F, and the drastic Controlled Substance Registration fee increase from one hundred twenty dollars to five hundred dollars have led to astronomical rise in revenue from fifty-nine thousand to two hundred thousand. So they now average in this fund about two hundred thousand annually. Thus, there is now sufficient funding from the C S D F grant, this fund, to, it's not a grant, I'm sorry, it's a fund, to recruit two more environmental health officers, an environmental public health officer one and a three, to adequately equip and train them to conduct these types of inspections. It is also crucial to retain the Controlled Substance Registration fee increase not only to generate revenues but to also prevent drug misuse and abuse such as opiates, especially at this time when more than forty percent of all drug overdoses in the United States were from opiate prescription in two thousand sixteen. Opiate would eventually be a problem on Guam. Moreover, as the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, I plan to fill existing vacant funded positions by recruiting a health educator, a custom service representative, an environmental public health officer one, an environmental public officer three, and a management analyst four. The recruitment of these positions will generate additional revenue from the Environmental Health Fund, which derives its revenue from health certificate and sanitary permit fees. The Division already has increased its revenues from the issuance of health certificates through the enhancement of the health certificate food safety training course by nearly ninety-two percent, from one hundred and thirty thousand two oh eight to now two hundred fifty thousand. So they generate now two hundred fifty thousand dollars annually. Moreover, the Environmental Health Fund revenue amount can be further increased and expansion, and that way we're gonna do it is expanding the training course to non-food categories such as cosmetology, massage therapy, hotels, et cetera. such as cosmetology, massage therapy, hotels, et cetera. Thus, the revenue generated from these courses helps sustain the operation of the Guam Environmental Public Health Laboratory. Aside from the additional revenue anticipation from the expansion of health certificate training course to non-food categories, as the Director of Public Health, I plan to implement strategies to enhance the overall revenue of the Division of Environmental Health. I like this division because it's got plenty money, yeah? These strategies include revising the sanitary permit fee schedule to meet the statutory mandate of four inspections per year at every regulated establishment through the administrative adjudication process, and collecting monetary penalties for repeated sanitary violations, and depositing these revenues into the Environmental Health Fund in lieu of the General Fund, because existing laws now mandates that all monetary penalties be deposited into the General Fund. So legislation is necessary to divert that funding from the General Fund into the Environmental Health Fund. Additionally, the Guam Environmental Public Health Laboratory was constructed for the provision of the food laboratory and the mosquito laboratory. I love those mosquitoes. Don't like them because they have lots of diseases that they carry. Environmental samples, such as food, and water, and mosquitoes can be tested in order to respond to timely disease outbreaks and foodborne illnesses and mosquito diseases, and also to conduct surveillance of food imports and the mosquito identification. With a food laboratory, testing for various food pathogens from environmental samples collected from disease outbreaks and food imports can be made. On the other hand, the mosquito laboratory would also have the capability of testing pesticides and pathogens in mosquitoes. Thus, when both laboratories become proficient in its respective operation, as a public health director, I plan to have Division Environmental Health pursue its certification and/or standardization to become reference laboratories for the entire Pacific region. The provision of such services would not only assist our neighboring islands, but also open opportunities to generate more revenues and apply for more grants from both the federal and national partners. Furthermore, to improve its existing management data, like the inspection reports, health certificate, and standard permit applications, et cetera, Division of Environmental Health must move forward in transitioning away from its existing MIS system to the File Maker Platform, which allows greater flexibility in the use and development of its database at a reduced cost. Funding is already available with two-hundred-and-thirty thousand from the federal government through the U.S. Department of the Interior Office of Insular Affairs, and has been rewarded and awarded for technical assistance in implementing a new database system. Okay, that's, I'm gonna take another drink, okay, because I'm going to my next division. The Division of Senior Citizens. The Division of Senior Citizens provides an array of services for seniors or our manomcos, such as adult daycare, case management services, legal assistance services, in-home services, senior center operations, transportation services, both regular and assisted, elderly nutrition, whether it's congregate and home-delivered, preventive health in evidence-based, National Family Caregiver Support Program, Aging and Disability Resource Center, information refer-on assistance, Guam Medicaid Assistance Program, Guma Serenidad with Crisis Intervention Hotline, elder abuse prevention, et cetera. We'll be here till tomorrow if I go on. There are twelve senior centers throughout the island, and there are three adult daycare centers, two at Dedido, and one of them is a dementia clinic, and one at Inarahan. At elected senior centers, they have this program called the Active Living Every Day Education Program, and is conducted so that participants can develop strategies to incorporate the physical activity into their lifestyle. This evidence-based health program federally funded through the Preventive Health Grant helps seniors live healthier lives. Additionally, the adult daycare centers operate Monday to Friday from seven a.m. to six o'clock p.m., except on the ten government of Guam holidays. The centers can expand its hours of operation in the evenings and on weekends, just like the health centers. The three adult daycare centers are also each staffed by the nurse assistants and the part-time registered nurse, and these facilities are all in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act standards. Lunch and transportation, if it is requested, are provided at all these three centers through the Title III Elderly Nutrition Program Congregate Meals and the Transportation Service Program, respectively. Adult daycare, case management, in-home, legal assistance, senior center operations, and transportation services are supportive services provided in the home and community-based rather than in institutions. Therefore, these federally funded supportive services enables Guam seniors to age in place. Quote, end of quote. Thus, as the public health director, I plan to maintain and grow these home and community-based programs by expanding Medicaid dollars, and this will be, of course, subject to a state plan amendment that is being worked on, and given the local overmatch, the overmatch can be used to match the Medicaid dollars, which will increase funding to further the provision of home and community-based services. Additionally, discussion has been made of serving congregate meals at designated gura, public housing sites. There are four gura housing, eighty-two early-development public housing sites located in Aguepet, Mariso, Talafofo, and Dedido. Thus, there are total right now of sixty-eight elderly who can qualify for congregate meal services. As a public health director, I, along with the Division of Senior Citizen Administrator Mr. Artsen Augustin and his staff, would need to, of course, work out the details to ensure that it is properly accountable, and there's much accountability for the program. In addition, we will be receiving data on the number of adults with disability residing at the public housing sites, and this data will also be used to determine if these adults can also be included in the elderly nutrition congregate meal services. Moreover, as the population ages, more caregiving is being provided by people who are not health professionals. About one in three adults of the United States, in the United States, provide care to other adults as informal caregivers, no training, no background. Caregiving is a critical source of support in the continuum of care for seniors, and I really recognize the need to support these funding for caregiving training. For example, their train on medication management, how to properly transfer the patient, stress management, et cetera. Thus, as the public health director, I support building Guam's local capacity for caregiving. Having been a caregiver for my eighty-year-old mother after working hours in the evenings, weekends, and holidays before she passed away, and now still a caregiver for the past eight years for my ninety-one-year-old father-in-law, who has been diagnosed with Lewy Body's dementia, a type of progressive dementia that leads to a decline in thinking, reasoning, independent function because of abnormal microscopic deposits that damage the brain cells over time. In support of the caregivers, the Department of Senior Citizens, or the Division of Senior Citizens, avails the National Caregiver Support Program, which has reached its cap level of the federal and local funding. Realizing that this program is in great demand, an in-depth discussion is crucial to identify the needs of Guam's community for caregiving training and support. The Older Americans Act, as amended in 2016, requires five basic services as follows: information services, that's information to caregivers about available resources; access assistance, assistance to caregivers in gaining access to other supportive services; three, counseling, individual counseling, which includes organizations and support groups, and caregiving training to caregivers to assist the caregivers in making decisions and solving problems relating to their caregiving roles; and four, respite care, care that enables the caregivers to be temporarily relieved from their caregiving responsibilities; and number five, the supplemental services, which are services on a limited basis to complement the care provided by caregivers. Of the aforementioned basic services, respite care is a key factor to support caregivers. Having been a caregiver for my father-in-law, I have firsthand knowledge of the need to have downtime for me and my husband alone. Respite care could be in the form of in-home respite and adult daycare centers. In-home respite is being provided today through Division of Senior Citizens' in-home services program, and I commit to working in getting this to be built further and to look at what can be done to increase the number of hours provided, as the current number of hours right now is sixteen hours per month, or one-hundred-and-ninety-two hours each fiscal year. For the adult daycare centers, three of them, as I mentioned earlier, I again will commit to funding these three locations and providing these caregivers the support that they need. Additionally, the National Family Caregiver Support Program, whose primary role is to assist caregivers, I will commit to work alongside with the Division of Senior Citizen Administrator, Mr. Artsen Augustin, the staff, to explore how public health can expand this program to meeting the growing number of individuals who need assistance to be caregivers. Furthermore, as a public health director, I will also participate in the discussion of an establishment of assisted living facilities that support the care needed, particularly for those who lack a family support system. These facilities must be affordable, otherwise the population of the indigent that requires this level of care would not be attended, and of course, the gap will continue over the years. Finally, in discussions with Division Senior Citizen, Mr. Artsen Augustin, the administrator, I will be exploring the possibility of having twelve senior citizen centers meet national accreditation standards. This idea was raised by him, and some steps were taken, and he has asked me to support this future endeavor. As the Department Public Health Director, I fully support having the senior centers meet national accreditation standards. Finally, we come to the final division of general administration. As the Director of Public Health, I will move forward in the medicinal marijuana program as the people of Guam voted in support of this program. We know who the smokers are now. On January twenty-second, 2019, fourteen days after taking the helm of the acting director, the Public Health Deputy Director Laurie Duñez, the Environmental Health Public Officer, and I met with Speaker Tina Munia Barnes and her staff, of course, to discuss the progress of the medicinal marijuana program. During this meeting, the speaker instructed her staff to give us copies of five public laws relative to the medicinal marijuana to all of us, and these laws are very detailed. Do I still have time? No more time? Okay. So anyway, okay, I'm gonna cut it, and then I'm just gonna go, okay, is that okay, Senator? Or if you want, I can continue, but I'm...
We don't want to cut you off, but yeah, we can skip the reading of the different public laws.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll skip that. Okay. So anyway, the bottom line is, I was instructed to continue and get a municipal cannabis regulation in place, the whole committee in place, and we sent out letters to all the eleven potential commission. It's called the Medical Cannabis Regulation Commission. So that letter went out requesting four names, and of course, we are also, the speaker provided additional recommended names that we would use that could also be part of this team of commission. And we also mentioned to the, during this meeting, that the laboratory testing facility, and what, how's the progress on that, how are we doing to open a laboratory testing facility? So we decided that we would have a second meeting that is needed, you know, to activate the initial Medical Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting, and before we do that, we are gonna meet again tomorrow with Speaker Tina Munia Barnes on February nineteenth at ten to discuss, you know, this whole medicine marijuana program issue. And meanwhile, just to give you an overview, since I took office, there have been applications for home cultivation, and this has really inspired many patients to register, and so far, as of February thirteenth, 2019, there have been seventy-three individuals qualified to use medicinal marijuana so that they have written certifications from a primary practitioner. And of the seventy-three individuals, six have home cultivation permits, just as an info. And I can skip on and on and go to say that with the new bill that was just introduced by Senator Clint Regel, Bill Thirty-four dash thirty-five, this amends the law, and this has to deal with the, from going from three years, it decreased it to one-year residency requirement. So hopefully, this will have an impetus for businessmen to set up shop, to open up and operate a marijuana laboratory in Guam, and maybe more than one lab. Public health's role, however, is we want to ensure that the laboratory testing facility is, and the dispensaries, are operating in compliance with safety rules and regulations. Furthermore, as a public of public health director, I plan to apply for the public health accreditation through the Public Health Accreditation Board, and which is in line with Governor Lulián Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Justin Noria's goal. And accreditation will consist of a whole series, I'm just gonna skip over that, and there really are three prerequisites prior to applying, and this is having a community health assessment done, a community health improvement plan, and an agency-wide strategic plan. And these three prerequisites have already been accomplished. Additionally, we created a Performance Improvement Management Office responsible for pursuing accreditation readiness activities to help achieve accreditation. And we also formulated the Quality Improvement Council. And public health, we do plan to continue to work, and I'm sending about five staff off-island for more information and education to prepare us for the accreditation process. And we continue to have strong partnership with the National Association of State and Territorial Health Officers, or ASTO, and the U.S. Centers for Disease Control in this endeavor. And we strive to achieve accreditation, or what we call public health accreditation, within three years. It's a very hard and lengthy process with a lot of work. In closing, I'm sure you're all very happy. Thank you, senators, my Department Public Health staff, my family, and my beautiful friends for being present today for my confirmation hearing. Sisus Massey. I would be more than happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Norsey. Your, the thoroughness of your testimony, and those before you who have also testified, really highlight, and I didn't want to cut any part of it off, it highlights for everyone on Guam that this is a super department, really. It's got huge responsibility and mandates and, and lots of challenges that have existed for many years. And I want to thank you for immediately accepting those, and not pushing them off, but accepting them and agreeing to move them forward. So I want to thank you for accepting the nomination.
I would have been in Las Vegas in retirement mode.
Well, lucky for Guam that you had another thought. I want to thank you also for your twenty-eight years and the service that you've provided to the people of Guam through your work at Department of Public Health and Social Services, your commitment to service director, your comprehensive plan to support the mission of the Department of Public Health to have the people of Guam, assist the people of Guam in achieving and maintaining their highest levels of independence, self-sufficiency, and health. It's a priority of the Committee on Health to support the mission of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. It's vital agency in our continued quest to sustain our quality and improve our quality of life here on Guam. And I think it's very clear that you are up to the challenge and aware of everything. All my questions that I had listed prior to your testimony have all been answered, and the most reassuring part is that you are on it. And with the testimony that preceded you, if you're on something, I guess we can be very, very confident that that will be accomplished. So Sisus Massey, I want to ask my, thank my colleagues for being here. You're also being watched at the court because we were expected there a while ago, but they've allowed us to extend this. So colleagues, Sabina Perez?
So thank you so much, Mr. Norsey, for your very thorough testimony. I must say that I'm up to speed now with the status of Department of Public Health and Social Services, and I really appreciate the detail and the amount of work that has gone into creating this status report, and I'm really confident in your abilities to continue the progress forward. And I do appreciate everybody who came here today on behalf of Mr. Norsey in support, and I think with community support behind you, it's only gonna improve. And so thank you for your testimony, and you have my support.
Thank you. Senator Titikli?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and for recognizing her hard work, as you mentioned. I've known you for a while, and I was hoping that you would have taken this job back in 2011. And, but you changed your mind, and I'm glad now that you decided to take it on. on, and I look forward to working with you, especially having your family here. I've known your brother, Judge, who's here, your other brother, and there are a wealth of knowledge as well that you can also tap into, because I know these gentlemen are very opinionated too as well, and, well, what was so nice was to see you with your husband there, holding his hand like you're nervous, you know, throughout this whole...
I always hold his hand, just to let you know, even at church.
Yeah. And that's a great sign, because, you know, being nervous like that still makes me think that, you know, you're not overconfident, that there is so much more to learn and to know about this agency, but I know you have a wealth of knowledge to get started. Just a real quick question, what is the condition of the structural building in Manila right now?
Right. Well, we have a generator issue. We have tapped with GPA to provide the, we have installed already a battery and its cap, and I've done extensive assessment of it, so that we plan to procure another generator, so that bid has already gone out, and it's already advertised, and the vendors have come to the facility to look at the generator, make sure that the questions that they need answered are answered, and so we're gonna provide them with written responses, and that was done as of Saturday, the complete assessment. $200,000 is being earmarked for the generator. As I told you, I'm going in circles. I started from Central Public Health, right? Then I go south to build the generator, then I go north to build the generator, then I'm going back to Manila Public Health. So that's part of the facility. Also, when we first came, Lauren and I, we didn't have an elevator that was working at Central Public Health, so we fixed that. We didn't even have the front door opening, so a patient came to me, I felt like the social worker for the first week. She had amputated, you know, her whole leg was all amputated, she had a hard time getting into the door. She says, "You need to fix your door." So we did, we fixed that already. We had another incident where the cesspool was overflowing, and when I literally went to see it, I nearly threw up, and all these molds were growing and all these other organisms. I had it waterblasted right away, and it's all cleaned up, and so now we contracted, we have a requisition for a company, Detree Plumbing, to pump it out very frequently, about 20 times in the year, so that's being addressed. And then we looked at other areas around the clinics, and each of the programs are struggling because they do have needs, you know, we have to replace all the tiles in our room. When we first came, I started scratching like crazy because the carpet was affecting me so severely. I had been sick because I acquired something in my throat, no windows in the facility, and so we knew, even Laurie didn't have air conditioning working in her own office. She's been bunking with me for the past, since day one, January 8, and so we're working on getting all that done, and we also got the support from GPA to help us with the air handling units at the, both the interior air conditioning units and the air handling on the outside, so we get that all functional, so we have a backup. So if the split air goes down, we have the central air and vice versa. So that's what I've done at the health centers, you know, always doing that, a backup of a backup, just in case something should happen. We don't lose vaccines that are costly or medications, so that's my concern, and so those are some of the things that, in terms of physical, that we've done within the month that we've been there. She was, she was with me.
Thank you so much. I do know that, you know, Manila facility is basically a fallout shelter and not meant to be a clinic at all, and this is a big issue. It's starting to get, it's worsening, so I hope you look into, with all your grant writing and skills of finding another facility, I hope you can look into that, and I appreciate...
We need to bulldoze down that building.
And thank you again so much for stepping up to the plate. I really appreciate it. Lynda, you're a wealth of knowledge, and I look forward to working with you as well. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Moylan?
Mrs. Norsey, thank you very much for all the information you provided. I truly believe we're in definitely good hands with your leadership, so I appreciate, I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Senator Son Augustin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Norsey, thank you for accepting the nomination, but I'd like to first thank your husband for allowing you to continue in this path that you're hitting, and you know what?
He's a wonderful husband, very supportive. You know, Senator, I'll tell you a story. I looked into his eyes, and I said, "Jillow, if you don't want me to do this, I'll give it up." And he saw me smiling, so excited, and he goes, "You really want this job, right?" And then I said, "Well, you know, it's a team here, team approach. So if you say no, it's gonna be no." So he says, "I want you to be happy. So your happiness is all that I care about."
Yep, and that's what I was gonna follow, you know, a happy wife is a happy life, right, Mr. Norsey? I know where you're coming from, but you know what? I do look forward in working with you in the appropriation side of the house, so we can figure out how we can assist you, and you know, from the last hearing we had, you know where I'm coming from. We'll just figure out something, but I'm just wondering if, is this the job you really wanted, because the way, the way it sounds, you've got a, you've got a wealth of knowledge that, you know, God bless you, Art, and everybody else in public health, but there are, you have a wealth of knowledge that can actually help the government in other areas that...
Well, I was asked for...
I'm gonna reach out, but we'll leave it at that, Ms. Norsey, we'll leave it at that, and I'll just bother you on appropriation, so you can help other folks get federal grants. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, one of the things that I spoke with the governor when she asked me to take this job, I told her that I had a lot of other job offers, even HERSA offered me a job at the highest level to help them, and they just said, "We can't just let you retire. You gotta do some work for us." And then, of course, I had other job offers at University of Hawaii Telecommunications Informatics, so I can work from Las Vegas in my home and travel, go back and forth, and then go to Guam and do a lot of projects with Medicaid. So they offered me that job too. So thank you for recognizing that, but like I said in my testimony, I am really indebted to Guam. I cannot thank my parents, and of course, the people that gave me a scholarship to be educated, because I was, I grew up in a very poor family. I think that's why it goes down to my heart. I grew up being very poor, this is just not, just half of my family. I have eight altogether. They're off-island and so forth, but I think the fact that they gave me that ability, the resource, the financial resource to be educated and to come back, to give back to what they did for me, I think that's why my heart just says, okay, I asked my husband, I pleaded, can we wait a little bit more? And of course, Papa Norsey with his condition, I also helped my husband with him. So yes, it's full, my plate is full, but with good support in the home, we're able to do it.
Thank you. Senator Shelton?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Norsey, and congratulations, and Sisus Massey for accepting, and just by the amount of people who came here to support you today and the testimony that they provided, I'm very confident in your ability to serve, and I look forward to working with you, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Munya? Mrs. Norsey, thank you so much for accepting the appointment, and I tell you, after your, no disrespect to all the other acting directors, but after your testimony, I felt like I ran a marathon, like I was getting an adrenaline rush, and I couldn't wait to get you started, so I just want to confirm you right away, so we can get these programs going, but we, on a more humorous note, we share the same hairdresser.
Yes, Tony.
He was telling me that you were excited about getting your hair done because of your confirmation hearing. And I told him, I said, "You know what? Just tell her, make sure you tell her that no matter what her hair color is, I still support her." So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I am in full support of your appointment, and of course, your confirmation, and, you know, there's so many things that I'm involved with, with public health, and the more you talk, the more excited I got, and the more I couldn't wait till you sit in. No disrespect to any of the former directors, but I'm really excited for you. I feel like you and I travel at the same speed in life, and we have a lot in common, so I'm really looking forward to seeing all of these programs happen. What I do want to, I'm looking forward to tomorrow's meeting, the outcome of the meeting that you're gonna have with the Speaker, and maybe one of the things that you might want to bring up that people keep approaching me about with the medicinal cannabis program is, is how the medicinal cannabis will affect the federal program. So I think that's some of the things that we need to focus on, because it's still classified as a Schedule I, a controlled substance, and how that's gonna affect some of our federal funding. So maybe that's something that we can really, really kind of examine and see how the other states are following through with that. Another thing, I do want to acknowledge your husband, Mr. Norsey, and maybe just request, because it is a teamwork, that she's taking care of everyone's health, that make sure that she takes care of her health too, because you can't, you can't take care of everybody's health if you're not healthy yourself, so I kept trying to signal you, "Drink some water," because you, you know, but yeah, please take care of yourself. We really need you on this island. Thank you so much for coming to the plate.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you again, Mrs. Norsey, and all of you, and we are in good hands. I think we're all excited about the prospects for health on Guam, and we've got a very strong team at the Department of Public Health, and with all of your support and our support, we will all work together to really increase quality of life on Guam. All the testimony today and any documents discussed will be filed with the legislature and available on the Guam Legislature's website. We are scheduled to have a session at the end of February, so I'm going to rush and try to get this committee report done in time so that we can vote on your nomination at that time. If anyone has any other information to submit, or they can submit it to senatorsat gmail.com. Sisus Massey, this public hearing is now adjourned. Time, the time is 11:12.